Sixteenth, 2025 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. We have a quorum. Before we begin with the agenda, for many years, John Parisi was the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. He was a valued and trusted public servant. His wife recently passed.
Oh, no.
I'd like to ask call for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Before we go on to the agenda, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any suggested changes or additions or deletions?
I didn't know.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 19th, 2025 meeting?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have two public hearings on this evening. The first one is an appeal by the Cornell family by and through their attorney, Alan Rapleye, who's seeking an appeal of a determination of the building inspector who issued a building permit for a pool and related improvements on the Yadgar property. The second public hearing is by weller and thrower, 27 Jameson Hill Road. The applicants are seeking relief from setback requirements to permit a 12-foot by 24-foot gazebo to be assembled on the property at the above location. Anyone here for the Yadgar appeal? Come on up. Before we open the public hearing, did you want to address the board or anything?
Sure. So what I tried to do, we were here in August, and on the date for, on the minutes said, you know, please submit anything by that time. I don't know if the, most of you, three of you were here last time, so I don't know if I can spend a little time on her or what.
You can, if you'd like.
Sure. Make a record.
Yeah. So what this really boils down to is, so in March, the board granted a series of variances to the Yadgars, and it conditioned those variances on a few items. And what occurred was, but let's start with the pool equipment, because it's, I think it's a little easier, is your resolution and the minutes of the meeting refer to the fact that the pool equipment was taken out of the setbacks. No variance was granted for the pool equipment, and in fact, the board relied on the pool equipment being removed from the setbacks as sort of lessening the noise, et cetera, from the pool on the Cornells. So I don't think there's any debate about that. That happened. In fact, the chair referred to that happening as helping sort of balance the equities here. What happened was, we learned that when the building permit for the pool was issued, the mechanicals were on the side of the house within the setback. All of this is in the letter that I submitted. When I saw that, I, among other things, I pointed out to the building inspector that the mechanicals were supposed to be taken out of the setback. Now they're right back. And after that, I was able to foil additional documents from the building inspector. And what I later learned was that they went from the side of the house into one of the sheds closer to the Cornell boundary, and actually also within the rear yard setback. So now the, there were, first of all, it was totally new, I think, to everyone. And secondly, there were now two setback issues. Shed is too close to the rear boundary. It's also too close to the side boundary. It's right on the boundary. When I wrote to the board in August, I included a number of materials which came from the Yadgars about the fact that the shed would need to be modified for exhaust, a pad would need to be laid down, and electrical will need to be pulled, obviously water would need to be pulled to get to that shed. So we're talking about significant construction. The Yadgar's attorney who is here, Mr. Demarest is here, but his colleague wrote a letter, and essentially his position was he did not respond to anything I said about the fact that it was new in the shed, that it, in my view, it required significant modifications to the shed, and it requires a variance, and that it was never represented to the board that it was going to be in one of the sheds. Now, counsel referred to in his letter part of a public hearing that we were all at, it was in October of last year, but he didn't include the transcript that he relies on. So I looked at it. I said, well, if you're going to refer to something, you might want to include what you're referring to. And he says that, actually, rather than guessing, I'll just quote what he said.
You're talking about his letter dated September 15?
Yeah, that's right, Frank, Mr. Romanowski's letter. Contrary to the, this is on page three, "The Cornell's suggestion, the idea of placing the equipment in the shed was raised during the October 24th, I'm sorry, October 15, 2024 hearing." And he refers to the transcript. So I pulled those pages. I'm going to leave this with the board. At no time were the, were the mechanicals proposed to be in the shed, nor was that relief requested of anybody. If you look at page five, look at the entire context of what was discussed. It's Mr. Mackey, counsel's predecessor, talking about the overall variance request. And look in, transcript 61 pages, there's one reference to the shed. He's correct about the page, but he's not correct about anything else. Chairman Rettle, they're sort of going back and forth, and Josh says, "There had been a discussion of putting the mechanicals next to the house, which might not require a variance, but then not a bad idea." Well, we all know it required a variance. That's why they took it out. But then, not a bad idea. Someone thought, why don't you put it over in the shed or put it in a little bit further away? That might require, you know, there's some flexibility about that. I guess if the board wants to talk about that some more. It never came up again. It was never discussed. The resolution specifically stated it was taken out of the setback, because it was. So the reason you weren't given the pages is because it doesn't support what was said. Here are the pages of the transcript, if you'd like to read them. So issue one is Jonathan issued a building permit, which he should not have issued for two reasons. One, those do require variances, not one, but two. Secondly, they are modifying the structure within the setback, and that requires its own building permit. They're pulling water, electric. There's nothing on the plan about any of that. And secondly, again, it's undisputed. I put it in my letter. The Yadgars have had a three weeks or so to reply that they're going to be emitting exhaust and noise much closer to the boundary than was ever proposed. And, you know, I don't need to tell the board, this has been going on for a few years now. You will not find one shred of paper where it's ever proposed to be in those sheds. And I might add, this is after the board gave all the relief they were seeking. This was a change to their plan, and not one that the board at any time sanctioned. The second issue is the screening. Will Demarest and I had a conversation about, you know, maybe there's a way to resolve this, all the history. We weren't successful in that conversation, but Will made a good point. I hadn't thought of it. I hadn't thought of it until tonight is, that the, this fence, we don't, the only drawing we have of the fence is the one that we created to try to replicate what it would look like. It's a big white fence right on the boundary. His colleague writes that they don't plan to remove the vegetation. If you look at the plan they submitted to the building inspector, I don't know how they put that fence up without removing the vegetation into there now. But more important, and this is the point that Will made, is when there's foliage there, you may not see the fence. The problem is that foliage is not there all the time. So even if the Yadgars don't remove the foliage, which we think is physically impossible, as soon as the leaves are off, you're staring at a six-foot white fence. And throughout the variances and the conditions of the variances, the board discussed about visual protection and noise protection, putting a fence right on someone's boundary isn't going to solve that. It's actually making it worse. So now, Mr. Demarest also pointed out, and he might be correct about this, that, you know, you can put a fence on somebody's boundary. You don't even need a permit for it. Not when you make it a condition of the variances that you're granting. So if the Yadgars were not building a pool and they decided they wanted to put up this big ugly fence, they might be able to do that, but they are building a pool. And the fence and the screening were a condition of those variances. So if every one of them, in fact, go back and look at your resolution. So even if you could build a fence there, you can't build a fence there when that fence and the screening are the conditions of the variance. So I sent to the board, and to counsel, a suggestion for how to resolve this, meaning, which I think is much more in keeping with what the board wanted to see, was take the fence off the boundary. You don't need a six-foot fence. Put it well into the property, screen it properly, and then you've got natural screening, which the leaves will come off. And then when that, those leaves come off, you'd be looking at some sort of pine or arborvitae or something that would actually make it more attractive from their side and not stick the fence right in our face. When you think of it, look at, look at this plan they submitted. The screening's all on their side. Frank has it right in front of him. The screening is all on their side, not on our side. What are we looking at? A big fence. Can't see any of the screening. It's on the other side. So, you know, those are the issues. Now, it was suggested that, well, that's entirely up to the building inspector. No, it isn't. The building inspector, what should have happened, I don't think it did, is if the board conditions were studied, if the transcript were studied, it would have been a plan, a somewhat collaborative plan, that said, look, you got to screen the fence. You don't want to screen the other side of the fence so you don't have to see it. And when the natural screening, if you're not going to destroy it, comes off, these folks are staring at a white, at a six-foot white fence. So those are the, those are the appellate issues we're raising. And I read the letter of Mr. Romanowski, and clearly, the Yadgars have no desire to resolve anything. As far as they're concerned, they can put the fence where they want. They don't need variances for the shed, and case closed. They're entitled to that position. But I found it interesting that Mr. Romanowski is harkening to Judge Rosa's opinion about, you know, can't you get along better? And then basically saying, we're not doing anything. And that's basically what the letter said. So I think that's it, Frank.
Thank you.
And are there any questions of the board that I can answer?
Okay. Go on. It is scheduled for a public hearing, so I would make a motion that we open the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone here wish to speak for or against the application? Come on up.
Oh, okay, Will, you can sit right there.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Absolutely. William Demarest, I'm with the law firm of Rock Falls Craft. You're representing the Yadgars in opposition to this appeal.
Good, welcome.
Thank you very much. We don't think the two grounds of the appeal have a basis to reverse the building permit that was issued. I'd like to start with the screening. The biggest point there is that Mr. Rapleye referenced screening the fence. And I think that that's problematic, because that's not what's required by the code or the resolution. The resolution was clearly concerned about screening the pool and the variance associated with the pool. That's what was clearly required. And clearly what the objection and the concern of the Cornells at this point is, is about the appearance of the fence, not the appearance of the pool. The fence as proposed clearly would screen the pool. That's what the code requires, is that if the pool is visible from an adjoining property, that it is screened to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. And that's what was planned here, to screen the pool. Now, I understand that the Cornells, Mr. Rapleye, put together what, a mock-up of what they felt the fence might look like right on the boundary. The intent is not to put it directly on the boundary. I think even with the diagram there, you can see there is some separation between the boundary line and where the fence is proposed to be. The cost of removing the heavy foliage, the heavy trees growth in that area alone weighs against the idea of trying to pull down those trees to build this fence. That was never the intent. And the intent was to address the requirement for a fence to surround the pool as required by the code and to address the screening issue. And in terms of screening, I think the board, I don't know if the board has been out there, but I'd like to provide just-
Good, you got photos.
A number of photos, yes. The first one in this packet, I'm sorry, was provided by Mr. Rapleye. And you can see the dense foliage, the dense foliage.
Are your stand, this picture's taken standing in Cornell's driveway?
That is my understanding, is this was actually submitted by Mr. Rapleye, that this is from, from their driveway.
It's from the back of their house.
Okay.
Towards the pool, towards the-
They would be looking at where the pool would be?
That was what was represented with, that's the view. And so you can see just how thick that tree cover really is. Some of these other pictures are from Yadgar's property. Again, you can see from the various angles just how thick those trees that are there are, especially if you go to, I think it's the second to last image in the collection. That's from their roof, looking towards the Cornell's property. You can see how thick that is, and you can just barely see the roof.
It looks like there's pine trees there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Which image is that? I think that's the third.
Yeah, there's a couple of them here.
It looks like there's a pine trees.
Yes.
There are leaves, there are trees there that are deciduous that'll lose their leaves, but they're very tall. It does look like there's pine trees.
And the intent is not to remove any of what's there. It's to place the fence behind that. That would obviously-
Those trees, everything would stay.
That is, that is the intent.
That's what your proposal was.
Yes. And, but not to add any additional plantings to screen the fence. The fence combined with the existing foliage adequately screens the pool from the neighboring properties. I think that's clear from the images there. And that's what was required by the resolution. Resolution language itself says landscaping and fence sufficient to screen the pool from view to the satisfaction of the building inspector.
Yeah, but the rest of that sentence is, and will use native plant species to the extent feasible. That one clause is gnawing at me a little bit. What Yadgar's proposal is, is to put any native plant species on their side of the fence, not on Cornell's side of the fence, right?
If they decide to put in any additional plantings, it would be on, on their side of the fence.
Yeah.
I don't know whether the intent right now is to, to still do that. The key, I think, there is a question of what type of a fence was being proposed. If a fence that had large openings for either horizontal or vertical openings, that the fence itself doesn't block the view, obviously more plantings may be necessary for that. But with the proposed fence, it blocks the view of the pool completely. So additional plantings aren't necessary for that. And again, the point of the resolution, the point of the requirements in the code are to block the view of the pool, not the fence. As Mr. Rapleye noted, and as our letter submission noted, under the town code, a fence, this fence is code compliant, could be installed without even the need of a building permit. So essentially, the Yadgars would be penalized for not having put up a fence and then come in to ask about variances for the pool. Because once the variant, the fence is there, there's, it's not visible, and the concern about visibility of the pool that's set forth in, in the code requirements is resolved. So they're essentially being penalized for not having built the fence first and then come in.
Well, I just, I'm sorry. That would be one view, but I just point out, another view might be that, you know, the Yadgars were granted relief from the zoning permit, and as part of parcel of granting that relief, there were some other expectations that would maybe be above and beyond what we require from the code. So I just ask this question, just because I'm hopelessly continue to imagine that there's a way to resolve this at some point in time. Obviously, I don't speak for the board or what they're, what they're thinking, but is there any way, at least as part of the resolution here, to actually put the fence behind the foliage on the Yadgar side as opposed to the Cornell side? And if that's the case, would that perhaps maybe resolve the issue? Hopefully, this will solve it. Just writing it out there.
My, the Yadgar's intent was always to do that, put it behind the existing trees. Trying to put it on the prop, the property line is, as you can see from the various images, is heavily wooded.
Yeah.
So trying to put the fence in that area would require, as Mr. Rapleye put forward, the removal of significant trees and plantings and the like. And that is not the intent. That expense would, is not what they were looking to do here.
So then, so then that one image, then that clarifies. And the one image, which was a photo-shopped image showing a fence going right across here, that isn't even what the Yadgars are proposing.
No, no.
Okay.
And it is slightly hard to see from that image that was provided to the zoning administrator, but the property line is noted, and where the fence is delineated is setback from that. It's not directly on it. So that was the intent, was to set it behind the existing trees. Between the trees and the fence, the pool is screened.
I asked, before this meeting, with the support of the board, I asked the building inspector to give me a copy of his file that he maintained when he issued the building permit. And I have that. We'll make it a part of the record. And there's one drawing here. It looks like they were going to put the fence here, and then Yadgar was going to put their new landscaping there.
That's the only one we've ever seen.
Yeah. Couldn't they reverse that? In other words, put the fence, they could put those plantings still there, but have the fence there so that-
Plantings are on the Cornell's side.
Yeah.
I don't know how much plantings are actually proposed on either side of the fence at this point, but-
I was just going by what Yadgar submitted to the building inspector.
And, you know, I think it's important to keep in mind that the expense of this matter and how long it's gone on-
You guys have made history.
Right. Is a significant factor that, you know, at the time that certain plans were made, maybe plantings were intended from, on the Yadgar side, that, but the additional cost of putting in plantings on the Cornell side of this fence-
Well, no, not on the Cornell side. What I'm suggesting is, instead of having the fence here, why don't they move the fence in a little bit? They were going to still put these plantings there. So why can't they just move their fence from along there in there so that the fence is also shielded a little bit too?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Wait a minute, I'm confused. I thought that's what you said was what is intended, that what's shown there is not what's intended, but which now what's intended is-
The existing, bringing the fence behind the existing, the existing plants, not the new plantings.
Not the new ones.
I see.
So this is not what you're intending to do?
That's what was submitted.
That's what was submitted.
No, that's what they submitted.
No, that was what the Yad-
That's right, I'm sorry. And you've seen this, Alan?
You have, because Jonathan, Jonathan-
Mr. Yank is here.
Hold on a second, I'm sorry to interrupt everybody. This is going to make the record look like a mess, so thank you, Chair.
One at a time.
It looks like there were coniferous trees on the boundary.
Pine trees.
Existing.
Yes.
Between the Yadgars and the Cornells.
Yes.
So the judgment of the fence is up to the building inspector, whether it's necessary to screen the pool between the two properties, correct?
Yes, the, what, the plantings and fence necessary to screen the pool.
Right, so you could screen with just plantings.
It still requires, it still requires-
The code requires a fence though.
No, the code requires a fence around the pool. That's up to them, right? Because it seems to me like there is existing right now, pretty good screening between the two properties. And I'm just wondering if that would satisfy the zoning requirement?
Of just the, of the existing? Of just the existing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think it's, it seems from the images, very full.
And if it's not, then you could plant some more. And you don't need to put the fence on the Cornell side of the property. I mean, I'm curious how you're going to maintain the fence without going onto their property.
Well, again, the fence is proposed to be on the Yadgar side of the trees you're seeing in that image, which those trees are on the Yadgar property.
All right, so what you're saying is the fence, when we're looking, it's not here in view of the Cornell's garage, it's on the other side of the tree line.
Right, so what you-
Okay.
Yeah, which is fine, and that's-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have this, what confuses me, and I'm, this is why I'm asking.
I was confused also.
Because if I look at this picture, is this not, is this not the property line?
That, yes.
So if that's the property line, and, and this red line, what does that represent?
That's the proposed fence.
So it looks to me like if that's the Cornells and that's the property line, the very next thing is a fence.
It's very close to the property line, yes.
So what, how is, so what, so the brushes and the foliage that we see in the picture, is that on the Cornell property?
My understanding is that the property line runs through those. I don't know as though a survey has been done to delineate exactly how much of that is on the Cornell versus Yadgar. I believe some of it may be on both, but at least part of that is on the Yadgar property.
So, all right, because that, that's not what's depicted here in the picture, which is why I think everybody's, at least I-
Yes.
I'm on page seven of your photos. This pine tree, this is on the Yadgar side?
Yes, I believe it is.
That's going behind that? Fence is going behind that tree?
I believe that is the intent, yeah.
On the Yadgar side?
Yes.
So what I'm-
It's going on-
Yeah, so what I'm seeing-
Those trees will remain untouched. The fence would have to be on this side of them.
But that's, right, but none of us have saw that of what we see here. We're seeing that, we're seeing the pictures of the fence on the other side of this is basically what we're seeing.
I'm not allowed to speak right now, so are you here?
No, you got to wait your turn.
And that's what appears from the, from the photo, or at least from the, from the plan that was provided, but it gives that impression, that it's, yeah, Cornell property, line, fence, foliage.
Right.
And I understand the confusion that comes from that, from the diagram, you know, but-
Yeah, I was just, I'm just thinking that the plan submitted by Yadgar, it probably wouldn't have been as objectionable to Cornell's if the fence was on this side of their proposed landscaping.
Those, I quote, yeah.
Right. I think we're all in agreement at the board on that.
At this point, I don't know that the Yadgars intend to do any of that landscaping on their side.
They have to, because that's what was approved by reportedly the building inspector.
It was.
At the very least, they have to.
In our resolution.
And they need a fence around the pool.
They do need the fence around the pool. The fence goes around the property, which qualifies for the fence around the pool, under the code.
All right. Let's move on to the shed.
Sure.
You want to still talk about this, or should we move on to the shed issue?
I just don't understand what you're saying, because the driveway, right, comes in from the street to the back. I mean, it would just help if we had a drawing of how the fence is going to be built.
The fence comes here.
Okay, so it's not on the property there.
Down to the back, and then here. And these are slightly different fences.
Okay, so if they move the fence, okay, got it.
Maybe we're all ships passing at night. So let me ask you this, is this Cornell proposed screen plan?
No, that's Cornell's, yeah.
That's Cornell's.
No, no, but what he's saying is the fence goes inside all of these trees.
Goes inside the existing. I would say that that's not.
No, that's what Cornell's are saying, but we did not get that, and they did not submit it the way it sees on theirs. What they submitted isn't seeing that. What we're seeing here as a board is there's a fence outlining their property with the foliage and stuff inside of it, and that's what we're looking at.
See, it's tough to second guess the building inspector. I'm just going by what our resolution had said. And when we specifically said that the applicant had to use native plant species to the extent feasible, it doesn't make sense for me, to me, to have the new plantings on the other side of the fence so Cornell doesn't even see them.
Right.
It doesn't make sense to me.
But I'm not even sure there are new plantings.
Well, there has to be, because Yadgar submitted this to the building inspector with new plantings. So that was his intent.
What makes you think those are new plantings?
Because they're not there now.
There's plenty of plants there now.
No, but they're going to put the fence and then more plantings.
Yep.
So, no, I...
I don't think that's right.
Here's what I think's why this is confusing. Apparently, this may not be where the border is, and apparently, there's some foliage that exists right in here, right?
Yeah.
And so apparently, what the proposal is, you know, which is existing, to put the fence apparently behind the existing foliage, and then what was submitted to the building inspector was to have these plantings, although now they're saying maybe the Yadgarts will do the plantings, but I'd be submitted to what they require to. So this is what the proposal is. Cornell's are simply, apparently, at least one request is to have, is that fence back here, that's at least one request. So that is a little clearer.
Mr. Yadgar, you're here, you want to come up and...
Well, I'm sorry, did we want to hear about the shed first?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So in terms of the shed, it's our position that this was raised during the initial ZBA process, and it was the Yadgarts' understanding that placing the equipment in the shed would resolve the need for variance, and we think that is accurate. And that's why during that process, it was discussed removing it. Mr. Yadgar's counsel noted that it had been suggested that the equipment be placed in the shed, and asked if the board wanted to have further discussion on that, there wasn't. And yes, it was removed, and the request for a side yard variance, placing the equipment next to the AC unit on the side of the house was withdrawn, was removed.
I do remember the removal, but honestly, I don't remember anybody mentioning that the mechanicals were going to go into shed. I'm not so certain you need a variance for that, but I don't remember that conversation at the prior hearings.
It was briefly referenced. The attorney asked if the board wanted to discuss the alternative location, and there was no further discussion on that, there were no questions from the board. I cannot speak to what conversations happened between those two hearings, but that, the Yadgarts had the understanding that moving the equipment from next to the AC unit, which is here, and would have required the variance that way...
Correct.
Into the shed would remove the need for the variance.
Are there two sheds there? What are the two squares?
There are two sheds shown there.
Does the shed need to be modified in order to do this?
Yeah, because the shed's non-conforming, the way I understand it.
Yes.
The question is whether it is, it needs a variance to put the mechanicals in there, in my mind, that's the question.
And our position is it does not need a variance, because it is a non-conforming, pre-existing structure. The equipment will go inside, so it is not a new footprint inside the setback. The shed will actually help to insulate noise, concerns, and visual. It's already there, it'll block the visual impact. And it doesn't require enlargement or modification of the footprint of the shed. At most, very minimal exhaust venting would be required. It's my understanding from the zoning administrator that would not even require a building permit in order to do that. So we're not talking about changing the height or changing the footprint of the shed that would fall into the alteration, enlargement of a non-conforming structure. It's, the structure is non-conforming, it's pre-existing, it's allowed to remain, it just can't be enlarged, and that's won't happen, is my understanding of putting the equipment in there.
So how would you get the water back and forth?
So pipes or electrical would run to it, but would be powering the equipment and going to the equipment, but that wouldn't require changing the footprint or modifying the shed itself.
I don't know how you would be able to, you'd have to alter it some way. But you can't just come to the door and then that's it. It's going to be altered.
My understanding is they would, at most internally for that, would be removing the floor structure, there would be piping and all, and there would be basically a flooring set there.
So you're altering the structure?
Not externally to the structure, and not enlarging the structure in any way from the footprint. And that's the key for a non-conforming structure. For example, with a non-conforming building or a house, if you're going to do internal renovations that don't change the footprint, that doesn't require getting a new, a variance in order to do that internally. It's the external changes, the changes to the non-conformity that are what prompt it. Here, it's all internal to the structure, the footprint is not changing, the height is not changing, so the non-conformity is not changing. There's no change to that. It would be the equivalent of having a non-conforming shed that they then wanted to use as a garage, which would be a conforming use. It's a loud use, they're just putting it into a non-conforming structure. That doesn't then require a variance to do that, because it's an existing structure, provided no enlargement or modification that changes the non-conformity would take place. And that's what's proposed with this, is placing it inside the existing structure and not changing the footprint or the height of the existing structure.
I think the question for us to determine is whether this work to put the mechanicals in there increases the non-conformity, because I understand, the way I see it, right now the shed is lawful and non-conforming. It could stay that way as long as you're not increasing the non-conformity. And it's your position, you're not increasing it.
Correct. The non-conformity would be changing the footprint, enlarging the building, changing the height. That would be the change to the non-conformity of a pre-existing, non-conforming structure in the setback, and that is not proposed here. So it is putting the permitted as-of-right use inside a pre-existing, non-conforming structure.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Do you not have to, like, do you not have to take these, the water pipes, you know, four feet down below the frost line and run them all the way across the yard? I mean, the foundation of the structure management, right? Do you have to dig?
Well, the pipes would be laid in the ground, yes, but my recollection of the code is that utilities can be placed within the setback, and they don't violate the placement of setbacks and require a variance to run the utilities. And I can double-check that in the code, but that was my recollection, so...
What's the bottom of the shed now?
Is it on the slab, do you know?
I would have to defer to Mr. Yadgar on that, so...
Do you have anything further?
No, I think that's...
What's the zoning district this is in?
Ooh.
So, based on that, we think the, as I said, the fence complies with the resolution, it blocks the site of the pool, which was the point of the resolution. It is what the requirement in the code is, not blocking the fence itself. And then the equipment in the shed, we don't believe requires a variance, and so it was proper for the zoning administrator to approve placement of the equipment inside the shed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak for against the application?
Would you like me to clarify some of the things?
Sure, come on up. You're Mr. Yadgar.
Mr. Yadgar.
Okay, the one and only.
Good evening. Everything you guys were talking about on the original plan that was put forth, everything that I think we've done since day one is to try to do our best to make the best of a bad situation. My understanding was our neighbors did not want us to have a pool, we did not believe that was fair. That being said, we have been, what I believe is, understanding of their desires for us not to have a pool for some reason or another, and when a fence was discussed, they have an issue with us having a pool, because they were going to see our pool, and they were going to hear. So when it was brought, "Mr. Yadgar, what are you going to do in terms of a fence?", I said, "I will give you the tallest fence I'm allowed to give you, and I will not be able to see through it." And to me, in my view, I'm doing what I felt was the nicest thing possible. I'm going to give you what you want, you don't want to see me at all. So the idea in the proposal was to run a fence through the existing greenery, which clearly, fully divides our two properties in a very dense way. I cannot see their house at all, they cannot see our house at all through the spring/summer season, but we are still going to do a six-foot fence that you could not see through. The idea of white never even came up in my mind, this was proposed by them in their rendering. And the idea was that it would go through the existing greenery as best possible, and to your point, if we would have to remove anything, we would replace it with whatever the term was.
Native vegetation.
Native vegetation, that was agreed to. The viewpoint on my side is, it already blocks fully, but if we, when we put up this fence that we felt we were doing the best possible job at blocking, if we had to replace anything, we'd replace anything. So that's where the idea with the fence line. And then, when it comes to this whole pool equipment thing, again, just consistently trying to do what is asked of me in a manner that makes sense. Why would the Cornell's have an issue with my pool equipment? They don't want to hear it. While we have proven that the equipment that has been chosen is best in class, and you cannot hear it if you're standing 10 feet away from it, let alone 90 feet away from it, I still took this seriously and went back to the original plan and said, "I'll just put it in the shed." What other issue would they have with my equipment other than hearing it? If it's inside a shed, they cannot see it, they cannot hear it, why would they have an issue with it? And instead, I got a proposal that they put it on my patio outside my door. Like, to me, it's just constantly, they're just trying to throw a wrench in this thing to drag it out and cost me more money. I am trying to do everything to make them as happy as possible to know that we are good neighbors, and we just want a pool, and we're well within our right to want a pool and to swim in the summer, and I am within reason trying to do everything possible. And the idea that Mr. Rapleye recently, in this meeting, said that we've been uncooperative, they brought forth the idea that, "Why don't you put a fence on your property and leave all the greenery?" They did that last week. We said, "Okay, I'll do whatever fence I want. If I'm going to, it's going to be on my property, I'm obviously not going to put a six-foot fence. I'm going to make it so it checks the box in terms of what's required for a pool, but that will not touch any of the greenery," which always was my idea, a big white fence right on the line that was never in the plans. I'm anything but not, pardon my French, I'm not going to say it. I'm doing the best I can to get through a hard situation and just move on from this, and try and check as many boxes as possible to make people that have been not at all nice to me for three years, in the best manner possible, to put in place a pool and a fence that looks nice, that we can enjoy, and causes the least amount of harm to my neighbors. That's it.
The plan that you submitted to the building inspector, these were going to be new plantings, do you know what you had intended there?
Native species, that, I didn't plan anything, I didn't get as far as sourcing anything.
What if you put the fence over here, so that, in other words, the fence would be...
That was something that was proposed more recently, and I thought we were in a place where we were two neighbors having a conversation, that was one neighbor saying what was bothering them, and our lawyer was in discussion with them, and I believe they were responsive, and I believe our lawyer said that we were open to that idea, but it was no longer going to be a six-foot fence, if it was going to be 15 feet into our property, it was going to be the same fence we were going to do here and here, post and rail.
Would that satisfy the code for having a fence around the pool?
Yeah, it would, because we would back it with the metal, like, black metal, that you don't see. I had that at another house I had, you know, unless you're standing right in front of it, you don't really see it.
Okay.
So this is what you came kind of in agreement, you're saying, already?
We were in agreement to do this, keeping it post and rail, leaving everything in place as it was, as you can see, you cannot see through, but then they went a step further and said, "You have to take out your pool equipment and literally put it here." That's my door.
Yep.
And that, to me, was like a huge slap in the face, I'm like, huh? You should have a pool, a problem with my pool equipment, if it's going to be unsightly or you're going to hear it, any other objection to my pool equipment shouldn't be your concern, in my view.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
So the post and rail was the...
That's why it moves.
Moves there, they would do post and rail, and then the plantings that are proposed, well, they have the original, and then they would have the new plantings, which would help further screen the post and rail on the other side. All right, that's all I have.
So, I'll try and be brief. The, it's a little tough to swallow that the Cornell's are so rotten people, they love this, they love coming here, they love litigation, they love all that, because they're just trying to give this poor man a hard time, which is essentially what he pitched. I believe the written word is more important than the spoken. He said he didn't know where the white fence came from. This is their plan, six-foot wood fence opaque. That's the plan that that man gave to Jonathan. We did not make that up.
You didn't make that rendering?
Did I make up this?
Well, you can't talk back and forth.
I had to make...
You can't have it back and forth.
We made the rendering because there was nothing else given to us. Now, if they thought the rendering was wrong, they should have made their own.
How's the white fence come into play, then?
Right here, right. This is the plan that was given to us.
Right, but it says wood fence, not white fence.
Six-foot fence, opaque is white. Six-foot fence, opaque is white.
Opaque is solid. No, opaque isn't like, opaque is solid.
Then that's, then I am wrong.
I would think it would say white vinyl fence.
I thought it meant white, so I'm wrong about that, then, forgive me. Okay, so the, Mr. Yadgaard indicated that his counsel and I spoke, the last word I have from his counsel is the letter that was sent to the board. On September 12th, I emailed to the board, essentially what I think, I think Mr. Yadgaard might agree to, I think he may have agreed, I want to put words in his mouth, but I think that that may be what we've talked about. If you go back and look at the resolution, counsel said it was to screen the fence. No, it wasn't. On page two of the resolution, moreover, the board shall condition the requested variance on the applicant's installation of fencing and landscaping to be approved by the building inspector, blah, 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 blah. The purpose of this condition is to minimize any adverse impact the variance may have on the neighborhood community. On page three, the applicant has agreed to install fencing and landscaping sufficient to mitigate the potential visual and auditory effects of the proposed pool and pool equipment. When feasible, landscaping installations will include native plant species. Page four, the applicant will install curated landscaping and fencing. Okay. It wasn't just to screen the pool, it was to basically make the whole thing gentler. The email that I sent to the board and to Mr. Dimrest essentially said, "You don't need a six-foot fence. Move the fence some distance off the boundary. That can be your pool fence. I'm not sure of the height, or I think it has to be three feet, but maybe it's higher. Plant some native screenings, essentially like you proposed. Take the mechanicals out of the setback. We never said in this or anything else, stick them next to your house. Just take them out of the setbacks. You can put them where you want. You can just take them out of the setbacks." And then, just, if you look at the email, basically just be sure those things are done, and we're done. I've not heard from, the letter I got in response was the same letter you guys got. "We're not doing anything. The appeal should be dismissed." Tonight, I think I heard something different. On the issue of the shed, look, what's now, I think, probably for garden tools, they want to make it a power plant. They're going to have to pour a filter pad. It's on their plans, filter pad. You're going to have to dig, you're going to have to pour, you're going to have to modify the building. However it's now being used, the use is changing. It doesn't house any mechanicals now. The building has to be changed. I think that if the building inspector has made, I don't know if he's made a determination, I think he probably has, by saying nothing, that they can do this. So, I do think the board has to make that determination. But I don't think there's any dispute that it's not being used as it's being used now. I don't know, I've never been in the shed. It's probably a dirt floor. It's going to need a concrete pad that's going to have to be level. It's going to need all the mechanicals, and the structure is going to have to be changed. Again, if he wants, if Mr. Yadgaard wants to take it out of the setback, it doesn't matter where it is. It should be, if it's not noisy, then it can be close to his house, because he won't hear it. He's just said he won't.
What is the Cornell's objection for putting the mechanicals in the shed?
They're all in this letter, but if you read the specs that, the specifications that came from what the Yadgarts submitted, it will emit noise and it will emit exhaust. And I took those from their specifications. The, will also be rate on their boundary. So, the hazard that it may do to either of those things is their burden. It doesn't become the Yadgards. If the Yadgards are so sure that it won't emit either of those things, what's the peril to just putting it closer to their home outside a setback?
So, Alan, just that, this is probably out of line, but, so if they, if the Yadgarts moved it back to where they had it in the first original plan, which would be by the house, the Cornells would be satisfied with that?
I think they want it taken out of the setback. On the other hand, Kyle, on the other hand, if the, all the issues can be resolved, maybe that can be resolved as well.
I was just looking at the building permit that was issued in August, on August 4th, 2026. The description of the work is construction of a 15-foot by 35-foot in-ground gunite swimming pool with a New York State compliant barrier. It doesn't mention anything about the mechanicals, and I'm wondering if the building inspector even considered whether the mechanicals can go in the shed, or whether he thinks the variance is needed. That may be a call the zoning administrator has to make.
To my knowledge, I don't think that was ever an issue that was presented to the building inspector as to whether the mechanicals require something or not require something. I do not know. But I think the date was just to get it on the record.
August 4th, 2026. Actually, it's, oh, that's the, well, August 4th, 2025.
But is it not better in the shed than in the middle of their yard? As far as noise reduction, or they don't need any variance? Okay, what?
Well, I also feel like we're speculating.
Let me just answer a little question quickly. Theory, no, if, not theory, but if the equipment goes back to the original location, it would, I...
Need a variance.
Yeah, it would be inside your setback. So, that's, I think that's the reason why it was moved.
Right, and when they moved it, that's why they took away that request for that variance, because it wasn't going to be there anymore.
But the problem is, is at that time that happened, nobody knew where it was going. They said they're taking it out of the setback. It's not out of the setback. Now, there's an argument that it doesn't need a variance. I don't buy that argument because of the changes, but it would have been better if it came up then.
Right. I'm just not so certain on the language of the building permit, whether our building inspector made a determination whether the mechanicals can go in the shed. And I think he's got to make that determination before somebody can appeal it. Okay, anything else, Alan?
No, thank you.
Anyone else?
And I apologize, because I'm not well-educated. I thought opaque meant white.
It's all right.
Yeah, that's my fault, and I apologize to Mr. Yadgaard, because that wasn't correct.
Anyone else care to speak for or against this application? Okay, I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, let's have some discussion. What are you guys thinking? I'll give you my thoughts. I think that we should refer this back to the building inspector and have him work with Mr. Yadgaard to move the fence, the six-foot fence, on the other side of his planned landscaping. He can do four-foot post and rail like he suggested, and I think that would probably satisfy the Cornells, and I think it would satisfy our intent with the resolution. As far as the mechanicals in the shed, I'd also refer that back to the building inspector to ask him to make a determination whether, in his opinion, the mechanicals do or do not need a variance. Until that decision's been made, I don't think there's anything anybody can appeal and for us to take a look at. That's my thinking.
No, I second that. Can you get a clearer picture of that?
What do you think, Alex?
I agree. I concur with you, because also, I'm not certain, just because you put mechanicals in a shed, if you were to pour a slime in there and bolt the pump down, run it under, run the pipes underground, no one's going to notice or see it, just as it would if you were to put, you could also pour concrete in there and store your tools just to have a concrete floor. I don't see any difference in that.
Put a lawnmower in there?
Yep, just to modify, to keep moisture off stuff, so. I concur, we should get, see what the building inspector says. Also, if anybody knew the, to make it a pump, a sound of what it sounds like when it's running, what it sounds like from a specific distance, and what it sounds like when it's in a building, and if the building could be modified just to put sound insulation around the pump, which also could be done to cut the noise down significantly. Pump's electric, am I correct? It's an electric pump?
Yeah, he's going to have to run electric out there.
There's also a decibel limitation on, you know, noise to your...
Did you read the specs?
No, I haven't seen it.
It's attached to what I submitted in August. I took that from what their plans submitted.
So, this is the actual system that they're using?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the August meeting.
It wasn't that detailed. You had to look up the specs, and I did.
So, just, so the pump exceeds, the noise level of the pump exceeds the decibel requirement?
I don't know. I honestly don't know.
There's code that just says you can't, you know, you can't have a certain decibel. If you exceed that, then you're noncompliant, so if they can say that they're complying, you...
I just think the building inspector has to go and do this and give us the proper information.
Yeah, I hesitate, here's the thing. I don't, if that's what you're going to do, I wouldn't get too far into the weeds on that, because you're not, it's bound before you, so.
Right, so I agree.
If you're referring it back for an interpretation on that, that's fine, and also...
Yeah, I mean, this is getting to the, you know, Mr. Yadgaard made a point. I mean, this is getting to be a little silly at this point. It's been several years.
I also just want to make the point that I agree with you on moving the fencing, because I think touching the existing foliage that's there would be a real detriment. You know, it's full grown, it's mature plantings, and the last thing you want to do is take those down, put them in the fence, and then just plant back, so I just don't like that solution.
Yeah, just to let you guys know, I mean, obviously, it's up to you. If the board was inclined, obviously, you can accept the building for inspector's position, you can rule it entirely, or you can modify it. So, you do have it within your authority to modify any of the findings of the building inspector. So, it's back.
If it goes back to him, can, will there be something in writing for exactly what's happening there so that if it, so that everybody knows what's going there, exactly what's going there, what's planned, so that, if there's, there'll be no debate, there may not be an agreement, but there'll be no debate about what's going in there? Just hoping, hoping that you would assist in that regard and ensure that clarity.
I know, we did close the public hearing, but I noticed you didn't speak on the payment of fees. I think that's a dead issue, in our opinion, that the fees were paid on a timely basis from the last bill that was submitted to him.
I covered what I needed to cover.
Yeah. So, that part of the appeal would be dismissed. I would make a motion that we modify the building inspector's approval of the landscaping plan such that the plantings previously planned by Mr. Yadgaard still be planted in, it'll be off Cornell's property line, clearly on Yadgaard's property, and a four-foot post and rail fence then be installed between his new landscaping and the pool. That way, there's new landscaping between Cornell and the new fencing. And I think, just for that issue, that's the only motion I'll make for that, just to modify it so that the landscaping plan be modified, so that there be a fence between Mr. Yadgaard's proposed landscaping and the pool.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm going to say, I think, I think he has the right to put the fence where he wants. I'm not so sure that he has to give up whatever the 22th's property, native planting, native planting between the tree line that's already there, then a fence, and then a bunch more plantings.
Actually, he was proposing that anyways. That's the plan that he submitted to the building inspector. He was going to do that, the extra plantings.
But I'm kind of in agreement with this, because there's enough planting to screen between neighbor and neighbor. So, if he just puts up a fence, why would that not just satisfy the requirement? I'm just not sure.
I think the chair's proposal is, no, he still has to do the additional plantings as shown on the...
On the plan, he was going to propose, he was proposing that anyways. That's why I left it in. All right, there was a motion, a second. Let's vote. All in favor?
All right.
Against? Okay, one against.
And...
Oh, and two against, three in favor. Next, the shed.
Indicate if you go into the resolution precisely who was in favor and who was...
You got that? Okay. As far as the shed goes, a building permit was issued by our building inspector dated August 4th, 2025. The description of the work was construction of a 15-foot by 35-foot in-ground gunite swimming pool with New York State compliant barrier. The building permit doesn't reference any work that would be required for the mechanicals. I don't know if electrical permits are necessary, plumbing permits, I have no idea. I don't know if the building inspector ruled on that based upon the four corners of the building permit. I don't know if we can make a motion to refer this back to the building inspector, asking him to make a determination as to whether he thinks any permits are required to put the mechanicals in the shed, and as to whether or not he feels variances are required. That would be my, that'd be my motion.
That's a motion? I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I agree.
Motion carried. Hopefully, this gets you on your way to get it closed.
Your mouth, it is yours.
Okay.
I love you guys, but I never want to see you again.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing scheduled. Well-earned Thrower requesting setback requirements to permit locating a 12-foot by 24-foot gazebo to be assembled on their property located at 27 Jamison Hill Road. Anyone here for that?
Yeah.
Could you please state your name?
I'm Stephen Thrower.
I'm Teresa Bellis.
Okay. Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
We're looking to put a gazebo right where this black square is. It's approximately 38 feet, 8 inches from Jamison Hill Road, and there's a 19-foot, 4-inch rear setback.
I was going to ask you about that, because the survey that we have had no measurements on it.
Right.
So, we had no way to determine that the variance.
Right. Yeah.
Who made those measurements?
I did.
Well, they're looking at that. Go ahead, take...
Did we approve this shed? Is this the shed we approved not too long ago?
Yes, we approved that at the November meeting, I believe.
On the roof.
Yep, so that received variances.
Okay. Yep. I'm listening.
From, you showed us, you supplied us pictures of what the gazebo is.
Yeah, and I took some more pictures today, because I noticed on the one report from your, it's an engineer, yeah.
AKRF.
Are you going to have the wood deck underneath it?
No.
No, we're having, it's going to be gravel. And I did take some more pictures showing it, showing from the street back. It's...
Do you have those pictures?
Yes. The entire back of it is completely screened with trees and shrubs. There's no way for the neighbor, our neighbor to see, to see it, and then it's screened by old trees and shrubs on one other side, and then... And then it's screened by old trees and shrubs on one other side, and then, a second. And then I made a sort of a video as well. So I don't know if you all can see this, but, so, how do I do it this way? So this is the shed that was built last year. And I'll see it. And then this is the back portion, back here, where we would want to put the gazebo, and it will be exactly in keeping with the shed in that it's the same color wood, it will age to the same color gray, and it has a black metal sloping roof.
What type of trees do you have to take down to put the gazebo in?
None.
So you're going to put it on that existing gravel?
Well, the gravel actually stops. I don't know if you can see it. There's dirt. It was all shrubs, so we just cleared it ourselves of the shrubs. The trees are past and a little down the hill from.
The shed, the gazebo will actually be installed in concrete pylons, 12-inch, 12-inch round, 18 feet, 18 inches deep. And then the gravel will just be underneath it.
Those two trees are going to be replanted there, baby evergreens. And so the road is obviously where we recently paved, by town of Washington. Thank you. I asked the gentleman that we're doing that how we got so lucky and made to get a road paved, and he said, because it hasn't been done in 25 years.
Can you decipher? You've got four measurements there. What are we looking at?
So this was the, because it's, the road's going this way, and the shed's going to go this way, so.
What's the closest part of the shed to the?
38 feet 8 inches.
To your property line?
To, yes.
38 feet what?
38 feet, yeah, 8 inches.
Okay, and how about the back?
19 feet 4 inches. Again, you know, this, on this side, it's a little bit, you know, the setbacks a little bit further.
Yeah, it's pretty tight.
Yeah. The.
And the thing is visually, the picture is different than what you see, you know, just on this in that we live in a heavily wooded area, and everybody but us has large properties around us. So, you know, the people across the street, you can't see their house, it's up a long drive, behind a wooded area. The people to our right have large acreage, and their house is in the middle of that, and there's shrubs and evergreens and maple trees completely shading their house from this. It's also, you know, it's just basically, how many posts, Steve? Six posts? Six posts. It's going to be open to the, you know, there's not going to be a back wall or anything. It's just going to be open to the shrubs. So visually, it won't present much of a, I don't know how to say this because it's late and I'm tired, but you know what I'm saying. When you look head-on, you won't see very much because the roof is black, it's shaded with trees. It is just six posts, and so, and then the gravel from the driveway is just going to be extended, so it won't, it won't be very choppy or, you know, as far as.
Intrusive.
Intrusive. There you go. And then our neighbor on the other side, there's a large rock formation, and then a whole sort of parcel of trees between their house and a big lawn.
Why put the gazebo there when you have plenty of room in the back and the side? You've got a deck in the back of the house.
So our septic tank is here. And then this, you know, to put it here would be even closer to the street, and then this is all rock.
There's a huge rock formation that goes all along here, so you couldn't put, and it's high, it's like five feet high. There's another large rock formation right here that comes up out of the lawn. So there's very little level space. The deck is not shaded. One of the reasons we wanted to do this is to have a shaded area to sit. We have family and friends that come over.
I'm just wondering why they didn't put the gazebo right on the deck?
Because it's not shaded.
Oh, but the gazebo would be shaded.
The gazebo would be shade, but also because the deck I use for, I'm an artist, and I use it a lot for working on larger pieces, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be useful. I mean, I would have to like be moving things, and then we do have a table and chairs back there, but in the summer, it's really hot, and even with gazebo over it, because it's in the sun, it still gets very hot and humid there, whereas the other location, it's shaded completely all day long, so it stays very cool back there.
You get a nice breeze, this, the topography of the land, this slopes down. Our neighbor's house is like over here. This is all their just wooded, you know. Well, no, this isn't even lawn.
No, no, on their back, behind their house is all lawn.
You work for Prime, you work for Prime Storage?
Yeah.
My family owned Guardians of Storage.
Oh, really?
So I don't know if that, if you have, you know, if there's other questions, we're happy to answer them.
Those are the only questions I had.
Yeah, I know how many.
Does the board have anything?
The neighbors on the other side of the line, have you spoken with them?
Which, you mean?
In back of you?
Yeah, back, yeah.
We have, they're very nice. I don't think that they would, it's a brother and sister who live there. They've lived there for years and years.
Well, we sent all the notices.
Yeah, we did send all the.
We sent all the.
Okay, and it was tied.
And they can't see, they can't see it even, even in the winter because there's evergreens, so they wouldn't, and because it's just like six, you know, wood pieces, it's not very visible set against like the darkness and the trees, you know. But they, they can't see it from their house because of the, there's a wooded patch in between this and to about here, and then their lawn starts and their house is over there. I know it's kind of hard to visualize when someone's telling you.
Mr. Yadgaard, I have a question. Are you going to have like lightning, lightning in there or anything like that?
No, no, it's just for the day, you know, it's just for the daytime.
Lisa, did you ever get a signed application and signed consent to inspect? I noticed they were unsigned with the submission that you gave us. We don't have, that application's not signed?
It's, yeah, it's certified.
You have the copies that were circulated to us are unsigned.
Oh, oh.
Probably because they were copied.
Yeah.
A copy would have your signature on it.
No, but they were copies before. Yeah, if I, if I'm not mistaken, it also needed to be.
Notarized.
Notarized, yeah.
I got the owners, George Smith, consent to inspect. Notarized statement, was that the last page?
Yep. Okay.
I notarized.
All right, good. You also need a third variance for lot coverage. It's a nonconforming lot, which means it's smaller than what zoning requires. You're not increasing the lot coverage by much, you only need about a 2% variance on that. Just to give you guys some numbers, what they're looking for, and we're going to need to keep this as part of our record with the measurements on it. The side yard variance, 75 feet is required. They have 19 feet 4, so variance of 55 feet 8 inches would be required. And on the front, it's a 100-yard setback. They've got 38 feet 8 inches, so they need a variance of 61 feet 4 inches, just to give you guys some measurements. How you guys feel about this?
I don't think it's going to change the character of the area.
I agree.
Me neither.
No, I don't think they're well at all.
It's not detrimental to the environment?
Nope, and their neighbors didn't come up with a letter or anything, didn't, you know?
They're not here to object. That's right. The variances seem substantial, but this is a small lot.
Right.
So there's not much you can do. We did previously give them even greater variances when we allowed the shed. Speaking of the shed, too, the elephant in the room is the escrow from the prior application.
Yes, and did you read?
Sure did. And the application forms clearly state escrows required, and our town website even mentions that escrows are required. We can't waive it.
Well, first of all, the application that was submitted said that the escrow may be required, may, and we didn't hear anything about that until it was approved. Secondly, you know, unless I've missed something, I don't see where the, the ten of the escrow is mentioned in the application. It may be buried in the code, and you'd have to.
What happens when everybody files an application for a variance of any kind? The town has a consultant, we have a town attorney, we have an attorney for the board. The consultant reviews your application, and they submit summaries to us. And that costs money. And that's what the prior escrow balance was from the first application. Now, you've already paid the escrow for this application, I think $1,500. I think you're, I think if we can keep the cost down on this application, you might be okay. Unfortunately, I can't waive the prior amount that's due. But what we can do is try to keep everything within the $1,500 so it doesn't cost you anymore.
Oh, you mean the total would be $1,500?
Yeah. I'll have to talk to our consultant to see if we can do that.
That, that's already.
If anything, it might be a very small amount due, but the $1,500 might cover everything. So we'll try to do that.
From somebody that, like, yeah, okay, that's great, because.
That's the best we can do.
Yeah, yeah.
It just felt a little, you know, because.
You're right, and I have.
We went through that whole process, and we, you know, we were told like, all you owe is the building permit, and we paid it, and.
I have to apologize to you. We had, we had a secretary very, 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 very short period of time, it didn't last here, and I think she made, she was the one that probably just forgot to tell you that escrow was due. Unfortunately, this board, we don't have the option to waive it. What we can do is try to work with you to keep the costs within the $1,500 that you paid. I'll do my best.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
We would really, really, I mean, we, you know, this project, I mean, we, we're sort of tightly budgeted on everything that we do.
Yeah, I read your emails, and I read your letters.
Yep, mine, too.
I appreciate that.
Lisa, Lisa sent us everything, so.
Well, thank you. And we will, I guess, hear about that at some point?
Yes, once I can work that out, then Lisa will be in touch with you. Anything else, guys?
No.
No.
We're going to, he's going to make a motion now.
You know, I got a question for Kyle later. First, I'm going to make a motion, open a public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Anybody here to speak for or against the application? Nothing for you, Howard, right?
But I'm not speaking.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is a type 2 action under Seager. I would make a motion that we declare this to be a type 2 action, not requiring any further environmental review. Second by Tate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. I would make a motion, I think we'll do three separate motions. I'd make a motion to grant a side yard variance in amount of 55 feet 8 inches. As we discussed, I don't see how this is any detriment to the environment or to the neighborhood, that no one was here to object to the application. It is sort of self-created hardship, but that's not controlling in this type of a variance application. My motion to grant that side yard variance. Any seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
I make another motion to grant a front yard variance in amount of 61 feet 4 inches upon the same grounds. There's no detriment to the neighborhood, it's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. Self-created hardship really doesn't apply. I also want to state that there's no other feasible location on the property due to the topography and the rock outcrops to place the gazebo, so this is the best place on the property. Do I have a second for that motion? Katie seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Last, I would make a motion that we grant a variance for lot coverage in the amount of 2%. This is an RL5 district. The permitted maximum coverage is 10%. Right now, there's existing 14%. This project is only 288 square feet, which amounts to another, just a 2% increase in lot coverage.
I have a second.
Yeah, minimal. Second by Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, I also make, as part of this motion, that it's all conditioned upon us working out the escrow balance due on the prior application. I will do my best to try to get all of the costs within that $1,500 that you paid. We'll do the best we can, and Lisa will be in touch with you after that. But that's a condition on all of the variances that we resolve that issue.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Sorry to kick you so hard.
I'm in Pleasant Valley.
Yeah, Pleasant.
Valley, Hyde Park. Oh, I'm sorry, so you're?
Katie Briggs.
Oh, okay. And you're Frank?
Frank.
Okay. Yeah, no, I work with Anita in Hyde Park and in Pleasant Valley. In fact, today was kind of crazy. I was up in Sawyer D, and then down in Pleasant Valley.
So riding your motorcycle?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, when the weather permits, when the weather, when the weather permits, and I, is this, is this being recorded? Oh, that's, okay. Yeah, when weather permits and I'm not having to haul stuff around.